Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, January 19, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Green Room. We can all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to item number two. Any visitors? Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized? Apparently not, since there's only two of you. So, welcome. Item number three, the approval of the minutes. We just need to change the date here. These are for the January 5 meeting. So, it would be the approval. We look for a motion for the approval of the minutes for the January 5, 2022 meeting.
Motion?
So moved. Carrie, second.
I have a, I'd like to amend the minute.
What you got?
Under the section where it reports on the PD-JAG VCP grant application, the wording is the grant funding would be used for public safety improvements to obtain a therapy dog. But after discussing it with the police chief, the funding would go to fund a car for the exclusive use of a therapy dog, not for the dog itself. It was the fund, the grant is to apply for a car.
Okay. Good. Okay. So then the motion would be to approve the minutes as amended by Carol's addition. Okay, good. Anybody else? Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number four, appointments, reappointments. There are not any this evening, so we will quickly move on to item number five, which is the Police Department line item transfer request. We all have a copy of it in our package. The reason for the request is the department has incurred higher-than-expected repair costs for the fleet's order vehicles, older vehicles, which are used for extra duty work. So they're looking to do vehicle maintenance of $10,000 and take that from cruiser fee and contingency. Any questions, first of all?
I do have a question.
Yep.
Is this time per question or is it after the minute, after the motion?
Let me go look for a motion. Motion?
Make a motion.
Okay. Second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Discussion, Carol.
Okay. Under comments, it says town has billed $23,500 in the first six months of this fiscal year for use of cars. Is that, so they're asking, in theory, to get back $10,000 from $23,000 that they billed for use of cars? Is that what's going on here?
You have increased use of vehicles in order to provide that private duty. The vehicles that are being used are the older Dodge vehicles that are more intensive on repair. It's, the transfer is from the contingency line, not the cruiser fee, because that's a revenue line. You don't make a transfer from a revenue line.
I know, but it seems...
Well, Carol, from what I took from the meeting last week was that, I guess, they have already used $23,500 already this year.
They have what?
They already have used $23,500 to maintain some of these broken old vehicles. What they're asking for is an additional $10,000 to finish out the year.
The extra demand on the Dodges have made them wear out faster.
Wish it could come from somewhere besides contingency. No, there really isn't any other place it can come from?
There's probably some nickels and dimes that could be squeezed out of the police department budget, but not enough to cover the whole amount.
Okay. So, just to clarify, they have a revenue stream of $10,000 from the extra duty that's going to go into the coffers at the end of the fiscal year when we accept it. But they're billing out $10,000 in the maintenance, but they've already shelled out $23,500, I think it looks like 500, from their existing police budget to repair these vehicles.
No. The chief, when he first wrote this, was confusing and thought that the private duty pay went into a separate pot that could be used to pay for police vehicles. I corrected him on that and told him that it's general fund revenue and it goes for the broader picture of the full budget, so the transfer needs to come from somewhere else in the general fund that is an expense line, the backfill, his vehicle maintenance account, carry him till the end of the fiscal year. So, the increased revenue that's coming in, the heavy billings that have gone out the first six months demonstrate the utilization of the vehicles. It also demonstrates that more money is coming in than what was originally budgeted. Therefore, any excess in the motor vehicle goes towards the town's bottom line and fund balance at the end of the year. We're taking it out of contingency now. I prefer not to be dipping into it now. It's a little early in the fiscal year, but there really isn't any other source in order to match up with what his immediate needs are.
I think I was confused by the term billed, meaning I thought that we had billed for the use of the, or the repairs of the vehicle he's talking about. We billed to get revenue, well, all right, thank you. Thank you for clarification.
Anybody else?
He should have written PD has billed.
Yes.
Yeah.
No? We good? No more comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number six, which is the Stanton House lease agreement. We actually go through this every six months. So, we now have the newest suggested motion, which would be the Town Council of the Town of Clinton hereby authorizes and directs the town manager to sign a six-month lease extension within Adams Stanton House for a property abutting to Pearson School for a fee of $2,500. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number seven, which is the Morgan School Yearbook. This is...
Can I bring something? I'm sorry about that, but...
Nope.
I remember years ago, we were asked to provide money to do a survey of the Stanton House to make sure that it was usable. And it was requested by the trustee, which happened to be the Essex Savings Bank. I've been told that the trust is zero. Does anybody know what happened to that trust? Have we done an audit as to make sure why that disappeared? No?
Don't know that any...
Does anybody care?
I don't think it's in our purview. I don't think it's within the town's...
It's in somebody's purview, somebody, it sounds to me like somebody used their fee income to get rid of a trust. I don't know how much was in the trust.
Right.
I just don't think it's under the town's purview if it's a trust or a private nonprofit.
That would be on them to audit their own trust funds. I mean, we really don't have a say in their trust funds. Good?
Carry on.
Seven. So, the Morgan School Yearbook, we do this every year again. So again, they're back again this year for looking for a full-page ad, which is the 375? Is that what we did? Yep. So the same thing that we did last year. So basically, they're just coming back again and looking for, again, for a full-page ad from the town. So, do we have a motion to approve a full-page ad for the Morgan High School Yearbook?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. On to number eight, which is the Town Council Town Manager 2022 Budget Calendar Special Meeting Schedule. We all have a copy of this that was in our package. If we are all in agreement, we can move forward and solidify these dates for our budget workshops. Is there anybody who has any issues or conflicts with any of these? All right.
Why wouldn't be here?
Good. All right. Here and none, we'll move forward with the dates as presented. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Item number nine, Sue, with the Finance Director's Report.
Hi, good evening, everybody. The reports you have are for December 31. That's the sixth month of our fiscal year. I'll just quickly summarize some of the highlights. Revenues for the month of December were $5.1 million. The majority of that was, five million of it were the tax revenue collections, with 4.7 being the current tax levy. The current tax levy collection rate is 66% of the fiscal '22 budget, and that's basically where we were as of last year as well. The other revenues of $100,000 for December, three-quarters of that or 72,000 of it were the town service revenues, with $34,000 of that being the town clerk, $24,000 building fees, and the remainder was the other town services. And in addition, we received $23,000 of state grants. One of them was a property tax relief for veterans, and the other one is the totally disabled persons grant that we received. The total of those two came in $2,300 over what was budgeted for them. So that was the revenues for the month. Expenses for the month of December were $4.9 million. That's about $800,000 higher than November, and the reason for that is there was three payrolls in December. Usually it's two, but twice a year we have three payrolls in a month. December was one of them. So the payroll, additional payroll plus related fringe benefits for that, and that's some additional education transfer requests were the reason for the higher expenses. Other remaining expenses for the month are detailed in my report. They're summarized there. Unrestricted investment balances were $21 million at the end of December. And I just wanted to note some cash flow items that are coming up. The town's main debt payments are made to correspond with the tax collections, so that they're always scheduled to be made February 1 and August 1. So, this week alone, we're going to be making $2.2 million of the debt payments, as well as the $4 million payment on the ban, which is due February 2. And so those are the outflows of about $6.2 million this week that we're making those payments. But we will also be financing and closing on the bond and bans February 3. That'll be $5.2 million coming into the town. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up on some major cash flow items that are going on, but they're typical of what we do this time of year. Fund balance, no change. Contingency, no change, with except, and then we'll be adding the transfer that was approved this evening. And at the end of my report, you'll, I've noted the projects that we've been working on. Financing, the, just spoke about, the '23 budget, and then the e-finance upgrade we finally have gotten through are the top priorities we've been working on and that are keeping us busy. So, that concludes my presentation. If anybody has any questions?
Anybody?
I had one thought. I was looking at the various departments, and they all seem to be well within the expected spending levels, except for general government. That's at 87% already, and it looks like we under-budgeted for the utilities.
We have encumbrances in the general government. We have encumbrances in there, which is why it shows that that's, that's over, that's included in that. Yeah, and the reports do look different this month. I explained that in my report, and that's because of something that reporting functionality of the new e-finance upgrade hasn't been made available to us yet, or some bugs fixed in it. So that's why you have the canned reports out of the system. That's why they look a little different.
So you're confident we won't have any issues with the total...
I do not see any issues in any of our budget items, especially general government at this point, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Sue. All right, we'll move on to item number 10, Council Discussions, Future Projects, and Any Correspondence. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss?
I'd really like to know, I guess I misunderstood, there doesn't have to be a public meeting for the ARPA funds?
A town meeting. So we had the public hearing, the next step would be...
Public hearing was to get public comment and feedback.
And then the meeting, there will be one?
Well, the council needs to then, by charter, approve the appropriations, which then have to go off to the town meeting.
Got it.
I'm assuming that you will want to have a more in-depth discussion before you push it off to the town meeting, because that's your last chance to put your fingerprints on it.
Got it.
Once you kick it off to the town meeting, you're done. So that may be a workshop or something of that nature, which gives you the opportunity to kind of work through it. There needs to be a little bit more of a drill down on some of the requests that have come in. And in light of some of the treasury guidance, we need to kind of readjust some of the fundamental assumptions that went into what the appropriations were going to be based on feedback we had on the interim rules. Now we have the final rules, so we should be updating that. And then, as I noted at the public hearing, squaring that against the charter, appropriations have to be under $300,000 to not trigger a referendum to appropriate what's essentially created by us.
How much more time would you need so that we can look towards doing a workshop?
I'm almost finished curling up with the final rules every night, so...
All right. So we'll circle back with that maybe next meeting, and then by that time, give Carl some more time to weed through all that, and then we'll set the workshop date.
Excellent. Okay.
We gotta pass around glasses for that.
Yeah, so this is, this is the project log. It's a little, little small. Don't have my magnifying glass with me either. I would like some feedback on this from the council. When this was first launched, I did ask for things to be prioritized. We have yet to prioritize any of these items. Target completions, that's going to be a total guess on that front. Owner, these are all populate, going to be populated by, I guess, me dealing with it. But there was some discussion of any kind of council engagement around individual projects and the like. Fundamentally, in terms of a strategic framework, I was kind of hoping that the goals would form the basis of the filter that would then provide the focus for projects. Rather, we're doing it backwards in this case of identifying issues, and then I'm trying to mate it with a goal to put it within some kind of framework. So, there does need to be some council feedback on this for rounding it out, and if this is going to be a regular tool to educate the council. I just need to make sure that this is working for, for you and that it's achieving some end that you want. In terms of updates, the ARPA spending plan, you've got the $3.8 million. We've had the council workshop, we've had the public hearing, as was noted. We will have to have a second workshop to put the final blessing on it, push it to the town meeting. Town meeting acts, and then we're, we're good to go. Pearson remains an ongoing conversation, which involves multiple players. It isn't just exclusively the town driving that bus. Natural hazards mitigation plan, there was some expression of interest before the election with the then council to have a workshop focused solely on that particular plan, talk about projects, and determine where that's going. If that's still an issue or an interest, this council would have to have set some time aside as a workshop to talk about that particular plan. You're probably all going to have to read it up to kind of get a better feel for it, particularly those that are new, that have not, didn't get the original presentation. Ping-ponging back up to Pearson, it probably would be beneficial to have some kind of executive session to discuss where we are with that, to make sure that everyone's on the same page with the same amount of information. Fire Department Facility Plan, this was presented to the prior council for setting a direction. The new council, everybody may not be aware of it. There is ongoing discussions between folks from the fire department and myself for where we're going with this, and we're doing our dialogue on it. But if this is going to be a project that the council wants to track, you're all going to have to get up to speed on, on that. And we envisioned a workshop to walk the council through the path that we think is appropriate to take. Radio replacement project, I know that Dennis is aware of it from police commission meetings and has raised it here in his liaison reports. This is going to have to be discussed within the context of the budget, and whether or not that's something you want to pay-as-you-go to fund, or whether it's going to be something that goes for a bonding request, and then that's a similar process of kicking it to a town meeting. Town meeting has to act, and then it goes out for a referendum vote, and then deciding what timing of that referendum. Communications, we've been putting out bimonthly materials on Facebook for Did You Know?, in order to try and educate the council on, the public on different topics. There's been some color on the comments that we've gotten back.
It's good work.
And then other people have gone along and deleted their comments, which has thankfully cleaned up the dialogue on Facebook. And I think in terms of going forward, we need to be mindful of how much information to put out there. First time we went out, we put four bullet points in. Not all of them were being read, and the comments clearly indicated that people were reading maybe two and not scrolling down. So subsequently, we've tried to skinny down what is being put on Facebook to get it down to a shorter, easier read, so that we don't have comments on the feedback that are not constructive. Temporary Senior Center was thrown out as a concept. I don't know what to put down as a description. There needs to be a little bit more flesh on those bones, and given the fact that we have to rehire the program coordinator, it may be, for at least the short term, something that's a little bit advanced compared to where we are, ready to go in terms of doing an actual project to that end.
Carol, I just have a question on Pearson, because I was reading through the budget. I know we have almost $40,000 set aside for Pearson. We've expended about $9,000. How are we doing billing through Public Works just for maintenance? Is that coming out of that line item, or is that being absorbed through Public Works?
We, we baked out of Public Works' budget all the expenses for carrying Pearson, so that it's not inflated in the base of Public Works. And when a decision gets made with Pearson, the budget becomes cleaner of either expenses spin-off or they go into a new cost center.
Same with the utilities, then?
So the utilities, the alarm expense, checking the alarms, we deactivated the elevator in order to eliminate that expense. Any ongoing maintenance issues, that's, that resource that we set aside as Pearson carrying costs was meant to address all of that, so it's not co-mingled with Public Works' existing budget.
Have you gotten the results of the study? Any word on that?
Yes, I got a draft back. I sent comments back to the town engineer for editorial corrections and then additional information that I thought should be added, just to round it out and to make sure that it's something that's readable by laypeople and kind of get rid of the engineering speak to a certain extent, so that everybody can read it. So we're going back, I'm waiting to get that final version back. The individual who was preparing it is leaving the engineering firm to go work for the DOT. So, trying to get that out of his inbox before he departs to go up to Newington, whenever they go back to work in their offices.
Just a comment from me, Carl. You know, I love this, obviously, and I think it's quick and to the point. Once we get it completely figured out, you know, it'll save time, I think, in the long run. As far as your two points, you know, prioritizing and assigning a liaison or someone help with an owner, you know, what if we just sort of asked if somebody wanted to be, you know, the owner and just go through it? And just say, you know, I'll raise my hand on this one, and you raise your hand on that one, and that's step one. For me, for prioritizing as trying to help set this up, I don't really know, to me, they're all priorities, you know, they're all important. So I was sort of looking to people that knew more about it to say, well, you could, this is something that's going to be more of a long-term project, and this is something we could tackle in the next six months to a year. So I would prioritize them in the amount, in the order of how quickly we could get them done.
To me, that raises a question of, to me, they're not all projects. They're issues. They're not necessarily a project. So, the ARPA spending plan is an issue. It stops being a council thing once it goes off to the town meeting, and hopefully we have a successful town meeting. After we get to that point, other than appropriating the second tranche and working through that process, it's not a project, per se. It stopped being an issue because we appropriated the money, and then the monies are populated into individual programs, and then the programs work the way they're supposed to work. So, to me, ARPA would seem to have kind of a natural endpoint, but if you want it as a continued topic item, I kind of need to get an understanding of what you want to get out of that. Natural hazards mitigation was really a workshop to work through what's in that plan, what the council may or may not want to take on, what are some potential projects that look like they might be doable, and then figuring out how to implement that. So the plan itself isn't really a project, it's a topic, and then a review of the plan would then spin off potential implementable items. The Fire Department Facility Plan, the plan is done. It was handed off to a committee to do. The committee has completed its charge by reporting to the council. The next step is really a conversation with the council for making it a project, figuring out the financing of that, and then moving. So it's, it's a project concept. It isn't something that's executable as we sit here tonight. Radio replacement project is, in the near term, closer to being executable, but the financing needs to be finalized. Communications, I guess that's, it's not a project if it's an ongoing thing, because it's just going to be this ongoing activity. And Temporary Senior Center is not defined. So I don't know how to put target dates on this stuff and sort of when's the endpoint? Is there an endpoint, or do we just keep talking about it? And then obviously, certain things, the council needs to have its, its conversation about what you want to do before it goes from an issue to a project.
Yeah, and I think we're, on the status, you know, with, say, ARPA spending plan, when it's completed, it moves to completed and falls off the log, and we don't have to talk about it anymore.
Yeah, so it's, I guess, the point is, is it completed at the end of 2026, when the dollars have to be expended? Or is it completed when the town meeting approves the expenditures and then the dollars start to flow? So, kind of, that's why I need some feedback from you guys to make this a meaningful document, so that I know what you want to see on it, for what is, what is the target completion date on ARPA? Is it 2026? Is it Q1 of this year? You know, what are we, what are we talking about, so that I know what I'm supposed to be tracking against and providing information to you on? So that's why I really need some more engagement on this from the council. I can't, I mean, I can try and divine whatever and lop off columns, and maybe that bumps up the font size. If it's just topics to discuss and where we are at and what's happened since the last meeting, you dump off the priorities, you dump off the last three columns, and it's just a simple report on those couple of things. But, you know, I don't know what's meaningful to you.
I mean, a lot of these things too aren't just council, like, you know, projects or however we want to, you know, define them. You know, the things as far as it relates to the, you know, the Fire Department Facility Plan, that's really not, you know, that's, there's other committees, other departments that are basically involved in that as well. So, you know, these aren't decisions fully that just come, you know, to the council and we make that decision. Those decisions would, again, there's plans, there's studies, there's other things that other departments would have to do in town and then bring it to us, and then we have that discussion. So, you know, not necessarily the lead on, on certain things that, that exist on this log. So, I mean, you know, the radio project obviously is a, you know, fired, I mean, a, you know, fire, police issue, so I mean, they're going to do their work on that and bring that to us as, you know, relates to a budget issue. You know, so I think that's, you know, I know we talked about, you know, you know, applying or putting like a council member to these. I mean, these are projects that, you know, I mean, my opinion, I don't think Carl needs our help to do it. I think council members should all be part of the conversations that we have on any of this. You know, so if we're going to direct him on kind of where we want to go and what we want to do, then that, as a council, we make that decision, and then that way, you know, he has direction on what, you know, he thinks, or we think he should work on. So, for here, you know, what are the items that we do want to do? I mean, we know, we talked about, you know, the natural hazards mitigation plan, doing a workshop for that and bringing everybody up to speed on that, because there may be a project in there that we can do. You know, the Fire Department Facility Plan, again, that's, that's a, that's a big project. You know, number one, they'd have to find land to move that facility. So, that's not something really that's sitting in our laps right now. You know, so I think that's, it's good to have these ideas out there so that we're talking about it, but prioritizing and making sure which things we would like to work on, you know, which ones do we really have, you know, firm grip on that we have control on, I think is where we have to, you know, kind of finalize. on, I think is where we have to, you know, kind of finalize. And the temporary senior center, I know we talked about it, but again, we lost our individual there. So now, who is going to be, you know, part of that project? You know, so these are some of the things I think we should have to talk about.
I think, not to put words into Chris's mouth, but I think that we came in here very concerned with our role, and we understood our role to be, that the council would put forward projects that Carl would implement. It was in the handbook. So we just, we just want, that's Chris's attempt. And these particular projects, I think he said he's not married to these projects, but he just wanted us to put our foot forward and, and get some projects out there on the table that we should work toward. I feel, my big concern right now is ARPA, and how much of this is going to fall on Carl. Carol and I had this conversation. This is a lot of work, a lot of applications, a lot of, a lot.
Menusia.
And we're wondering, Mr. Kilduff, how you're going to go about doing all of that? Do you need more help than you have? Do you need to budget more help from that ARPA money?
I have all these gray hairs at the tender age of fifty-one.
Fifty.
No, yeah, fifty-one. Because I've been doing, I can do a lot of this stuff, and I have the experience doing it in different environments and in different-sized communities, so I assume...
But this is, like you said, has never happened before, this ARPA money. It's amazing.
Right. But it's, it's, you shoulder it and move it forward. So in terms of how, how the dollars could be deployed differently to alleviate administrative burden, at the council government's level, there was a discussion, trying to see if there was a role for Middlesex County Revitalization Committee to play some sort of role in vetting of applications, review, and then sort of bringing it back to the municipality and saying, "This is what came in. These are eligible, these are eligible, they're okay for expenditures," using their underwriting model to push out the process by which dollars could be allocated. I'm not sure that those conversations have fully advanced to something that's ready to go with a clear dollar amount, that if Clinton used it, it would be X in additional admin expense. So that's the only thing that's immediately on the horizon. Other communities or counties of government that are at a higher level than Clinton, they've hired specific people to focus on doing this, but those are much larger communities, which much larger dollars amounts in play than, than what we have here. So it's, it's a matter of scale.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on what she said is, the, you know, the initial question was, what projects are out there that we want to track and keep, and, and bring up when we have our meetings and see where the status is? I didn't actually write most of these. I don't know, I didn't know half of these things existed. And I think some of the, the council has chimed in and said, "Hey, add this." And Carl, you've chimed in and added a few things to the list. So I think we're getting too hung up on, you know, what the priority is, and what the completion date is, and it's a list of things, projects that we want to move forward on and get updates on. And if the update is it's done, then it's done. If it's, it's too far out to really comment on, then that's fine, too. But, you know, I, I've learned a lot over the last two months of what these projects even were. I didn't even know half of them even existed, so I feel like it's a success already.
Anyone else? I mean, so ultimately, I guess, you know, we just have to come to a consensus on kind of, you know, we do need to give some direction to Carl as far as these projects or these, I guess, things. I mean, that's, like, again, a lot of these, are they projects really, are they really projects? You know, and like, you know, are they sitting in our lap, saying that we have control over what is happening? And that seems to be the issue. I mean, you know, the Pearson thing is, he's been handling it for two years. I mean, this isn't, you know, so the council members, and we've had executive sessions, we've had conversations with the previous council members that, you know, as it relates to Pearson and what's going on. So, you know, that's a moving target. And, you know, so if it's going to be on a list of, you know, there's other things that have to be, that has to be, that have to be taken care of before we have any involvement. You know, so, again, the structural engineer report and those things, once those are finalized, then maybe we can, you know, have some more direction as far as where we want to go with that. You know, but again, having a list of items, of things that we want to talk about, then I think, yeah, that's a good idea. You know, but are they, are they technically, though, as we look at this, a type, a project that the council has, you know, involvement in? You know, maybe some of these aren't, but some of them are. So I guess that's kind of where we need to, you know, lead that direction. Which of these are things that we can sit there and say, "This is what we want to take on?" You know, because these projects ourselves, I mean, as a council, we're not taking on that project now. That's something Carl's going to work on, and then he'll bring it to the council, you know, at the appropriate time.
Even more importantly, two of these, the fire department and the radio dispatch, those are other departments that are going to bring that to us, so...
Right.
They're the experts.
I think for that project, it's, we've got a defined scope, we have a estimated expense, so then it becomes a financing decision, and then that's, that's the nexus where the council's involved. Pearson, there's a couple of points where it comes back to the council for what the next steps are, but we're not the sole driver here. We're dealing with an outside entity, their process and procedure. We have ultimately a date we're trying to line up for AG's office. There's a lot of moving pieces where the council is not always going to be at that decision-making point. Somebody else has done it, or there's some other step that has to be done before we get to the council decision-making point. Fire department study, the first nexus with the council already took place, with the old council explaining the nature of the project, doing the follow-up from the study that was asked for previously. So that first step was done. The next step, which, in conversations with the fire department and myself, we felt was the next logical step, was to have a workshop with the council to go from concept and identification of an issue to a roadmap to be followed for, "These are the pieces that need to line up. This is the financing we need to talk about. These are the moving parts. Makes sense for this entity to do this, and makes sense for that entity to do that." And then start to lay out sort of the general glide path that that project would have to follow. And obviously, there's a number of moving pieces in that also, but at least get the council primed to understand what the next steps were going to be. That would be the next, what we viewed as the next nexus point with the council. And then, based on the roadmap, that would lay out other times when the council has to be engaged, there has to be a referendum, something else has to happen, some other entity has to be involved. But at least we'd know the path that we're on, as long as we're all in agreement that that's the path we want to be on. So I'll update this and skinny out some of the other columns, and then, as a list of things to talk about, I'll update it as, as appropriate.
Carl, before Christmas, I asked if perhaps you, as a professional, would tell us as a council, ideas that you see for projects that need to be done in this town. I don't know if anything comes to you, but again, I'm concerned about our role in fulfilling it.
It's not my job as the chief advisor for the council to tell you descriptively...
I know, but I know it's our job to tell you.
You should do this, that's really your job.
It's our job to tell you, and we want to know.
I can give you suggestions, I can give you guidance, but ultimately, it comes up to the council saying, "Yes, we want to pick that thing, and we want to do it, and we want to, we want to run with it." So that's, that's where it comes back to, really, you guys, so...
Okay, so we're going to have to have a workshop in which we talk about what it is that we want to put forward for you. Is that right?
Well, it's this conversation of things to be...
Okay, because we've heard what isn't a project. I'd like to hear what is a project.
But again, that's, that's entirely up to everybody that sits at this table, so...
But we need to, we need to come to the terms with that.
Right, but I mean, this is why we have this on our agenda every, every two weeks, so that we can have these discussions, and these are the preliminary discussions that we will have about what projects we think would be beneficial. And then that way, if we need to set up a workshop, if the fire department comes back, to come back in and, you know, go through their, you know, their process of what they've been going through. So I mean, that's, I mean, this is why this is on here. That's, the time is now for us to have that conversation. I mean, this was on, future projects was on our agendas prior for, you know, meetings before this. So I mean, that was always something that was on here. And I know it's, you know, it's a sticking point, but ultimately, maybe there isn't projects right now that we have the ability to work on. That just might be the case. And may there be other things that the council then would look on, policies, procedures, other things that, you know, charter allows us to do. So I mean, those are some of the other things. I mean, I know that's the, the big boom, and we want to, well, you know, let's get something done, let's make it seem like we're doing something. You know, when I read the year-end review, it seemed like the council did an awful lot over the past year. So they may not be things that everybody's comfortable with and like, and is happy with, but we, we have done things. We've done policies, we've had procedures. You know, the project thing is the big boom. But again, that's not on us. A lot of that also has, you know, other entities that are involved in that, like Carl says. I mean, the Pearson thing, yeah, I mean, but it's just not us. So we continually talk about this, but ultimately, once those are taken care of, then it can move forward. But until that happens, and again, we can't sit there, nor can Carl sit there and say, "Well, you know, we need this done." If it's in somebody else's lap, then we have to rely on them to do what they need to do. You know, so that's why this is on our agenda every, every, you know, two weeks, and this is where we would have those, you know, topics and have those conversations about what we think we should work on. So, you know, we'll keep this on, we'll, like Carl said, we'll work on the, you know, the project log, and, you know, we'll, we'll try to see what we can do. Anybody else? Any other comments? If there are none, we will then move on to the chairman's report. Just two different things, a couple things. Carol, congratulations on retiring.
Thank you.
She is retired from the land use office, and I shall have a lot of free time to bother Carl. So if any projects need to be, to get done, she'll be happy to go and visit Carl every day. So thank you for your service to the town, Carol. And then hopefully, now that we are hopefully done with the kit handouts and everything else, I just want to again thank Mike Neff, and obviously, the Clinton volunteer fire department for everything they did during that handout process. They gave up their time on multiple days to come out and hand out the test kits and the masks, and everything Mary, obviously, went through as well, to make sure that everything went through fine. And again, if anybody does ask, we do have masks that are here in town hall, so if people are looking for masks, we have thousands and thousands of masks, and we have thousands of thousands of hand sanitizer, so you can direct them to town hall, and they can come in. So if people ask, and you hear anybody that's looking for them, they certainly can come to town hall and get it. All right? Next on, we will move to town manager's report.
You have the written report submitted as part of the agenda, so budget season is now in full swing. Departments have submitted their budgets. There's a few loose ends that we're trying to wrap up now. My budget reviews with individual department heads will start rolling out and review and vet their requests, which then I'll make appropriate adjustments before a budget is presented to you guys. Now, based on our schedule, that will take place on February ninth, at 6:00 PM. That's a Wednesday, so in keeping with how we've been doing the budget under the charter, that evening, I will present an overview of the entire budget, estimated revenues, which is a projection as it relates to where mill rate could go. The superintendent will provide an overview of board of education expenses, not detailed, and kind of the books are given to you that evening. They'll point to the workshops, which are going to be seventeenth, twenty-second, and twenty-fourth, is really to start marching through the budgets, talk about them line item by line item, so you understand what's in it. Any adjustments, one way or the other, that either the council wants to make, or that we recommend to you based on evolving assumptions? Because as we move closer to the end of the fiscal year, certain contracts, certain renewals, the numbers get refined, the closer we move along in the budget process. So we would start to telegraph that to you guys for cuts and revisions that you could make from the information that we had at hand, basically now, or December, to put together when we submitted the budget. Last year, we did a budget survey to gauge budget preferences, spending preferences, and get some feedback from the public before an actual budget document is issued. That was a project between Town Hall and Morgan Students. We'll be doing that again. The survey form is approved, ready to go, and we'll make that live, and I'll certainly pass along the link to you once, once we're up and operational on a different way to get some public feedback on the budget before we're into the heat of things and referendum votes and the like. Bond sale was successful. Our bonds were picked up by the marketplace. In some cases, certain bonds were oversubscribed, where interest exceeded the number of bonds available to be purchased. The bond anticipation notes had a high degree of interest. Some of the individual years of our debt also had very strong interest. There were headwinds that we had to navigate against with conversations out of the Fed about raising interest rates, and then the concern about inflation, which made it a little challenging. We were in the marketplace on the same day that Greenwich was New Canaan and Derby. So two of those four are natural triple A's. Then there's us with our double A-plus rating, and then Derby is a little bit lower. So the strong credit characteristics of Clinton, that positive report out of Standard and Poor's, helped carry the day for interest in, in our, in our debt. Additional information for you that's not in the report, Connecticut Water wants to work with us again on road restoration as part of their ongoing road, road work. We did this twice last year. They're asking for us to again participate with them, where in this case, they would provide the town $130,000 to perform final roadway, roadway restoration on Beach Park Road, where they've been working on doing some waterline work. It's got a patch on it now, which will carry it through the summer. We were planning on doing Beach Park Road in the spring, so instead of us spending tax dollars and bond dollars in order to do that paving, it would get done with Connecticut Water, but our bid with Tilcon would get the work done. It was effective for them, and it was effective for us on Glenwood Road and some of the other areas that we did with them last year. I just need to sign an agreement with them that we're prepared to take their payment, and we'll, we'll fix the, the road in the spring, when the, the next round of paving gets done. So if there's not any hesitation, I'll be, I'll sign that and get that moving forward. Previously, I reported to the council that we were trying to get the Climate Corps from UConn interested in doing some work in the town to help take a look at data collection along the shoreline. This was partially trying to spin off something out of the natural hazards mitigation study to get some data analysis and benchmarking that would help inform the next steps of what we should be doing for looking at coastal resiliency. Right now, we've been told that UConn has two students that are interested in working on the Clinton project, so that's positive news, that they will be able to get that labor taken care of, be moving forward with talking to the folks at UConn and establishing meetings to get the, get that plan up and running, so that they can work this summer with, trying to at least get a benchmark for data on coastline and different issues that we're, we're facing with climate change and storms. Also following on heels of storm discussion, Eversource is planning on doing some work in Clinton, doing some tree trimming along its main lines in town, where the primary backbone is, and scheduled maintenance trimming. Some of it's their ongoing maintenance work to push back the tree canopy or dead trees that are at risk for falling on the lines and causing power disruptions. So that's going to be moving forward in order to get some, again, I guess, resiliency to take out the dead trees that are at risk of falling on power lines and causing power disruptions through the different storms. And then the only other item I have is, I did make some reference in my report about the old landfill and trying to work on that. It's been a project that I've tried to focus on for a while now, talked to a couple of different vendors, looked at different approaches to trying to get something to happen on that site. So I've had... So I've had conversations with another vendor, following up on getting information, I need to be comfortable with it, and then that will be a conversation with the council for gauging your, your pleasure on that one. And then we'll, we'll see where that goes and whether or not an opportunity exists to do something with, with that property also. And that's all I have. Thank you. Carl, your comments?
With the tree trimming, that's always been a very controversial event in town, and in the past, we've notified the town of that happening and the process that goes along with it. So you might want to behoove yourself to do that before you start getting phone calls at town hall.
Yeah, I've got their, their map, so I guess we can start pushing that out online and see what the, the next step is.
May I ask who some of the vendors are for the landfill? What sort of vendors are you speaking of? Or is it too premature to ask?
One is premature, and I wouldn't want to put the, put a name out there until it's something that's real and we want to talk about. The other two fell in the category of solar farm developers trying to solicit interest and how we could shift the responsibility for capping the site to another entity other than the town.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Carl. We'll move on to item number 13, which is the Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Does anybody have anything to report tonight?
Yes, I went to planning and zoning, and I'll focus on, I guess, one interesting thing was the 5759 West Main Street. That's now going to be all residential, they had initially wanted that and couldn't get it, and now they do, so that, they're happy about that. John Guskowski focused on, obviously, the Indian River landing. He focused on your upcoming regional housing plan and that, January 24th. I was interested in the John Street, it looks like to-do project, it's a capital T-O-D-O project, which I know nothing about, being new here. And so I'd love to ask about that in the future. And also these cottage neighborhoods. This is the second time I've heard about them at the planning and zoning, but I don't know anything about them. And they both sound interesting, developing, finding developers for West Main Street, East Main Street, et cetera. And then he talked about the sidewalk, the bids going out and, and for East Main on, in spring. That was about it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, it's T-O-D, it's transit oriented.
Oh, oh, okay.
I don't know if they just stuck an extra O on there.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Why?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Economic Development had a meeting on the 11th. Guest was Christine, who spoke of the Clinton Business Development Forum. I don't know if you had anything to add to what you discussed at that meeting or not.
Well, there's been some question whether or not I can be invited as the state representative to speak or not, so it's up to the chairman whether or not, or if you want to deliver the reports, it's up to you.
They discussed that Goodwin College has provided some machining centers and milling machines for the, for the Morgan School, which is good. Actually, they said in the, as far as the steep facade improvement, there are two bids in. One is Malone Chiropractic, and actually, Mike is going to, Mike is putting in an application for, granted, Pete's. I don't know where that stands.
Both of those are perhaps.
He doesn't own the property.
Those are people that expressed interest, but there were issues with their applications, and I notified John that I had received two requests, and I responded back to them immediately that there were issues to be resolved in both of their requests. So until they get their second quotes in, in one case, we already had a lengthy conversation, those are not going to be applications ready to act on, so maybe it's not getting translated properly when it gets to the EDC conversation, so it's two expressions of interest, but not executable projects.
But nothing's there, okay.
Correct.
And they had a discussion about the ARPA economic development. We received a letter.
Yep.
As a result of that. And, that it?
All right. Dennis?
A report on the police commission meeting ago Monday. As far as the budget concerned, things are going along fine, other than what was brought up tonight about the vehicle maintenance. Also, they are still trying to hold the fort, as it will, about the communications department there, because, you know, they are in trans, in the transition of hiring a new individual and getting him trained and all, so there might still be a little overtime, and that budget may reflect that. They did get the presentation by the three, by three individuals from that, those dogs, Town of Groton, Town of Middletown, Yale University, each brought a dog and made a presentation or just told about the benefits of having the dogs. I brought the question, of course, I said, well, I did not notice that all three departments dedicated just one individual to their dogs. The person wasn't really in the regular routine patrol of the department and how they thought a town like Clinton could get by with having an officer in the patrol. And that was a lengthy discussion. It was a very nice presentation. Quite frankly, I didn't hear a definite from the commission, the police commission, stating that they would adopt it. I think they left it up to the police, that if, police chief, that if, in fact, he can implement this program without zero impact to the town, they probably would be okay. One thing that did come out, which I'm surprised I thought would be here tonight, was I do believe, I remember hearing at the end of the meeting, that they were going to send a proposal to us requesting that we purchase that other vehicle through that grant, or apply for that grant for the purchase of that. I'm surprised that that did not come tonight, so maybe something else has come up in the meantime that I don't know about.
The chief is on vacation and his intent was to bring it at your first meeting in February.
Okay, fine.
I don't know where that stands with any timelines, because we are well beyond when this should have been submitted to the PM.
So other than that, that's it, Mr. Chief.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else? Carol?
Yeah, BPW had their meeting Tuesday night, and it sounds like everything's going swimmingly. They're going to, they said they're going to start on the land use office very shortly, doing a renovation, rehabilitation in there. But the interesting thing was that they said that work is moving along on the Pleasant Valley Road Bridge, and that they have been told it'll be finished in April. Is that, which I believe is the timeline, so.
Well, that's the contracted date, so.
That's the contracted date. It sounds like it's going to be.
If it was done earlier than April, that would have been preferable. The other project was done ahead of schedule, but.
Yeah, well, something is better than nothing, I guess. This has been dragging for quite a while, so. Good. That's it.
Anybody else?
I'll just say, I was at the Park and Rec Commission, among the Park and Rec Commission, the hearing for the skate park, and there was probably about 20, 20 people that showed up, and basically, I think everyone except two expressed their interest for keeping the skate park, and, you know, there had been rumors out there that it was going to be replaced by a pickleball court, and, which wasn't the purpose of the hearing, the hearing was just to hear public feedback, so it was very respectful, and they presented themselves very well, so the Park and Rec Commission will take that under advisement.
Thanks, Chris. All right, we're good? All right, we now look then for a motion to go into executive session and invite Carl and Mary.
To move.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. All right, we are back from executive session. We will now look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second you wrote a motion, why not?
We have a second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you again, everyone, have a good night.
Good morning. Good morning.